City Council of City Gunbarrel, City Texas will meet in the workshop of City Hall Council Chamber is located at seventeen sixteen West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas on Wednesday, November second at ten AM. Roll call from my right, please.
Here?
We have a quorum. I want to address the audience. If you feel a need to have conversation amongst yourselves, please step outside. Workshops for the council to work together and to exchange ideas and work towards it. It's difficult to do that with a lot of distractions. If you are unable to do that, then I will ask the chief of police to remove you from the building. So just want to make sure we get that there before we get going. Citizens comments. The purpose of this item is to allow citizens an opportunity to address the city council on items that are listed on the agenda or issues that are not listed on the agenda. Any person desiring to make a public comment must first be recognized by the presiding officer and sign into the podium with their name and address at least ten minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Individual citizens' comments are limited to three minutes. The presiding officer may ask the citizen to hold their comment on an agenda item until that agenda item is reached. The city council has no obligation to respond in any manner to comments or questions from the public. Any response from a member of the city council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, a recital of existing policy, or direction to staff for follow-up. Item one A, discussion regarding internet providers. City manager? Oh, I'm sorry. We have citizens' comments. Lana Allerins?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Lana Erins. My address is three, three, four, Skuna Road in Gunbarrel City. I've been a resident of Gunbarrel for twelve years. We moved here after I had my first child. She's with us today. I moved here because Gunbarrel City's the best. We have a great park. Now we have a dog park. We have the best schools, a bunch of businesses, and Gunbarrel City knows how to throw a party. So I love living here. My time here, I've been a Girl Scout leader for eight years. I started a playgroup for zero to five-year-olds. I did a healing art workshop for kids who have experienced trauma. Make-a-space for adults support group for local families on Facebook. I serve on the Gunbarrel City Board of Adjustments. And I'm currently the president of Reach, which is a 501(c)(3), trying to connect people and their community. We'd like to see more engagements of citizens with nonprofits. I became involved with the Humane Society when my daughter noticed that their pictures online were not very good. The animals looked scared and they were fuzzy, and she knew she could do a better job. So she stepped up to the plate and offered to help. It's been amazing. She's a beautiful photographer, and I've sent some pictures to Janet, but I didn't get them in time. We've made some animal toys for you to share with your animals when you go home, so I'll leave those for you guys after the meeting to select what you'd like to take. I have noticed some problems with this city. There are some major communication problems. And even this morning, I had a communication problem. I said I wanted to speak, and I was told, "Citizens don't get to speak today." And I was like, "No, we do." So we had to rectify a communication problem just this morning. I think that's what's happening with the shelter. I think there's a communication problem going on. I don't care what shelter y'all work with, but I think you need to work with an established shelter with a 501(c)(3) who is already doing good things in the community. The needs of these animals, you think when you're not in it, that, "Oh, it's easy. It's dogs and cats, and you take them in, and you do what they need, and you adopt them out." It is so much work, and they don't stop pooping. They just don't. Like, we scoop up the cat area before we take pictures because it smells bad, and it's hard to get the animals calm. It's hard to have a good environment. But like, they're literally just still pooping as we're changing their litter box. You just don't know until you know. Shiloh's going to talk more about that. I've just barely been working with the shelter. I barely have my feet wet. We come up with challenges every time we go, and the staff has been great at solving them. I don't know if you guys know any staff that's there day-to-day, but it's hard work. I can't do it. I can only volunteer for like, three hours at a time.
Lucas Allerins?
He doesn't want to speak.
Molly Allerins?
My name's Shiloh Holland. I am not actually a resident in Gunbarrel City. I live in Seven Points, just the other side of the bridge, although I had a wreck y'all probably remember on the bridge about six years ago. I have been a full-time trainer and volunteer here in Gunbarrel City and all the surrounding areas for the last almost nine years. I have been a trainer for more than twenty, and I've been a volunteer in other areas for more than twenty as well. I am a behaviorist. I work largely with aggressive animals, or at least that's my specialty, is fear and fear aggression. I've been able to rehabilitate and save a lot of animals from euthanasia, and I volunteer with more than one 501(c)(3), including our local shelters here and in Athens. Anytime that they have behavioral concern, a dog that they think is maybe aggressive, I'm more than happy to volunteer my time and go up there and assess and see if the dog is truly aggressive or just scared. Most dogs are scared, okay? Carol knows this. We haven't met yet. I look forward to that. But I want to thank y'all for hiring Carol. I have heard some really amazing things about the work that she's doing, not least of which was the rectification of a couple of phone calls I got on Monday morning from concerned citizens who felt individually responsible for the placement of six dogs, which y'all got done. Congratulations. Placing six dogs in a foster home in one day is quite the challenge, and even more so to get them all adopted by the next day. Good job. It's not sustainable, though. You cannot place that many dogs every day of the week, and if you can, share the secrets because Dallas doesn't know, Houston doesn't know. The whole dead gum state has no idea how to do that. I do have quite a lot of concerns about the current plans, namely, I'm concerned about what are the plans to sanitize and make secure a facility that would keep disease from spreading? Are you planning to seal the concrete? Are you planning to make solid walls for these animals? Because you're going to need it to keep the elements out. What are we going to do when it's one hundred and fifteen degrees outside in the shade? I mean, air conditioning is expensive, and I'm looking at a building just to house about another six animals for my own personal business, and that's going to be more than $20,000. That's six animals. That's not the number that Gunbarrel brings through this, through our current shelter, or, sorry, previous shelter. I know that the numbers that we were looking at to continue using the Humane Society do not begin to reflect the amount that I have run through my own business because I know what my business makes, and it takes more than one person to maintain the number of animals in a healthful way that I have come through the business, and I know you guys have so many more. I'm also concerned about what happens when dogs aren't adopted. Euthanasia is really not a reason. I mean, just not getting them adopted is not a reason to euthanize. We need to have a plan for that. I'm also very, very concerned about the fact that we're now refusing rescues to adopt in the city unless they're contracted, and we have no contracts. So what happens to, like, Haley's Wildlife? Can they not have adoption events? And, okay. So there's a whole list of things, and I didn't even get to half of them. Thank y'all.
Kate Weller, one, twenty-nine, Camino Robles. I am here to urge you to do something rather that's usually not done, and that is due to the rampant misinformation that floods Facebook and Nextdoor all the time, and especially when care of animals is involved. I would very much urge you to put out some sort of factual statement after this meeting. I know it's not usually done after a workshop, but I would urge you to do so to get the facts out there and to stem the speculation of people who are not here, who will hear what happened. And I think in this particular case, since this issue is emotional on all sides, that you take that unprecedented step to do it. Thank you.
Ms. Holland, I asked, you said you had a lot of items that you didn't get to.
Yes, sir.
Could you send those to me via email?
I would.
Item one A, discussion regarding internet providers. City manager?
We received, the city received a notice of intent to provide service from North Texas Fiber that listed some terms and conditions in their proposed contract that have been discussed between city council members and the public and both private cities. And I think the city council has some concerns about franchise fees. That's just one of those concerns. There are multiple representatives here in the audience from North Texas Fiber. I've had a conversation with them and asked if they could just share some of the financial side. We believe in the product. A sales pitch has been provided to council. I don't think we need any more sales pitch. We just need to know the financial part of the agreement. And I think it really is an opportunity for city council to ask them questions directly. I provided to each council member the year-end numbers for franchise fees that we receive from cable TV, and I believe the cable TV franchise fee includes the internet service franchise fees that we receive from our two current providers, Suddenlink and Centurylink. So those numbers, in the event that another company came in and took some of that business, would affect those numbers. Those franchise fees for those two companies currently stands at five percent, which I believe is the maximum federal communications allowable franchise fee. So we do charge the maximum in the city of five percent for those two franchises. So...
The two franchises?
Suddenlink and Centurylink. I believe Suddenlink is now optimal, and Centurylink is going to be bright speed that week, is the new name of their company. So with that, if you have any questions to me, I can ask them to come up and present.
It's good to see you guys again. Always a pleasure to be here. We found a piece of property down the street, so we're about to be locals as far as the company's concerned. The city manager was kind enough to set us straight on how your franchise fees work and how the tariffs work and the posted fees at the Fed and so on. We realize, especially after our conversation recently, thank you for having that with me, if we jerk all the fees from Centurylink out from under you and come in at a lower fee, it's going to lower your intake of that money to your budgetary items. So that being said, we've all said, you know, we want to pay what everybody else is paying. We don't see any reason that we should reduce your intake of fees. Nationally, when you have a failing provider that's basically a monopoly, and you've had that provider for a period of years, when you have a new fiber service that comes in, that's a true fiber service, the uptake from the citizens and the businesses is about ninety-three percent. So basically, everybody abandons that old carrier. So if we come in and we lower that fee to a percent and a half and you agree to it, we're really hitting you, and we do not want to do that. So we will pay that five percent, or whatever that fee is. I believe it's around five percent. We're happy to do that, and thank you for explaining that to us. So we're good with that. So I want to take that right off the table, number one. Number two, we're real happy to be here. We're very excited. We have our fiber network completed from Dallas all the way to Athens and all the way around the horn to Malakoff and all the way back up here. But we also have fiber now from up at the corner up here in Maybank and on down that comes all the way past here now. So we've got our fiber all the way down here. We have a little more to build to get over to Seven Points. But all in all, we do think we will be putting forth some services starting sometime in January. So we're real excited to do that. These fiber builds are extensive. We're spending a few million dollars in your town. We really are excited about the concept of economic development, and I know that you've got a stellar person here to do that, that will work with us hand-in-hand. We want to help you any way we can there. But if you've got questions for us, we'll certainly answer them, but we're proud to be here. As I say, we found ourselves a building and a piece of land to be able to work from. We'd love to have the city's business if you would like to be a customer. Some, my guys are all here now, and we can all answer questions that you have. We run a little late because the internet was out at Denny's, and it wouldn't take my credit card, so I apologize for that. It wasn't our internet. But anyway. So please ask away. Mayor, if you have any questions, whatever it is, we'd love to answer it, but we're really excited because this has been a battle to get this fiber here, but we're ready to get going.
I have a question. I'd like to start with the city manager and then come back to you. Jeff, at the present time, the only thing that we're discussing includes that fee for failures to obtain up to eighty-five percent uptake in homes. The Gunbarrel would be responsible for providing fees back to North Texas Fiber if we don't hit that number. What is the current number that we're paying to any provider for the number of subscribers under any percentage in Gunbarrel City today?
We do not pay that.
Okay. So this would be a new expense to us, right?
Correct.
May I, if I may?
Please, yes.
For a point of clarification, once we understood the way the tariffs worked and got all that stuff worked out, we don't feel we need that eighty-five percent of any kind of guarantee. We'd rather come in here as a provider like the other guys, compete with them. So please, don't count on that. We're not expecting that at all.
Are we going to say it goes to zero?
I'm sorry?
Are y'all planning on taking it to zero? Well, we're not responsible for y'all's fiber.
You're not responsible in any way. I will say, we really want the city's cooperation. We want you guys to help us where you can. If it's easy for you to be able to let us send them some flyers and things in the water bills and things like that, that'd be very helpful to us. And as I say, we really want your cooperation, and we'll be worthy of it. But yes, for sure, we are not expecting any kind of guaranteed uptake. As a matter of fact, we've decided we'd much rather go the other way. We think we're going to beat that anyway. We think we'll be in the nineties. Yes, ma'am?
Just for clarification, we have nothing to do with the water bills, electric bills, any of that. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so that's not something that we can count on over there. Well, that's all right. They're going to need internet, too, so they'll probably let us, they'll probably let us do it.
How are you going to define any maybe impact of streaming on the future of their activities? That's what it will be all of this, and that's taken away from franchise fees for a lot of cities, a lot of... Do you all thought about that? Would it be a long-term impact of that?
The impact of streaming is here to stay. You and I know that there will be no more cable TV here quickly. It's just going to all be streaming. That's a positive and a negative on the network. As far as we're concerned, we have enough fiber. We can't fill it anyway. We're not concerned that we're going to ever have a buffering problem or anything like that. As far as the fees, we do understand that the taxation on internet is different than the taxation on television and streaming. And how that's all going to shake out, I'm not sure, but whatever it is, it is.
Yeah, place a court now.
Yeah, you know more about it than I do at this point. I just watched that bouncing ball. It seems to change every month. But whatever it is, it is. I will tell you that streaming is here to stay. It is the way of the future, and if you're on our network, you'll want to stream. And we will have a TV package and so on, and it'll be real, real good.
The question I've got is regarding the escape clause that is coming. I think this agreement has been on the go for federal law for twenty years. But on the other hand, we, as much as we may like it, we may want to partake before then, for whatever reason. So we're going to, I would urge us to have an escape clause for this agreement before we sign off on it.
And that escape clause would be, you mean, as far as the city's business?
Yes, termination of this agreement.
Yeah.
Nonperformance, you never...
Absolutely. There should be acts of God and all those things in there, no question. And by the way, we do major, major companies up in Dallas and all over the metroplex, and we are absolutely rigid about the way we run a network. Most of us are pilots, and we're all pretty fastidious about the way we run things, and we've got major companies in the US companies, Fortune One Hundreds that use us. We don't go down, knock on wood, we don't go down, and we carry, we always give more than you need, never less than you need, which is the way things usually run around the lake, at least where I live. So I don't think we have any kind of problem with that.
You mentioned the TV package. At what point are you now as far as listing out what kinds of services and costs associated?
We have a list. We already have a TV package in place. It may morph a little more, but for the most part, it's already set in place. It'll probably be, it'll include HBO and a few other things. And then if you want to subscribe to your Netflix, like I do, or, you know, whatever else you want, you can sign up for it. And some of those deals are getting a lot better, too. You know, if you don't mind a TV commercial here and there, you know, they're starting to get pretty reasonable on the prices. But yeah, we have an extensive one. It'll probably have a hundred channels, including all your local channels out of Tyler, Dallas, that type of thing.
And then you'll have other options like streaming all the way and things like that. That's really what I'm interested in. What products would you make available to the citizens of Gunbarrel, and then what would be the associated cost for those different options?
That's a very good question, and I can't say we have set that in stone yet. Michael?
We will be releasing that before January first with our introduction to the community, and we will have versions on the channel packages. Is it sufficient, one hundred, two hundred, and then the plus with premium channels being made available? We have our internet package, and we'll also have a voice package for people that, you know, require the landlines. We also will have a business and commercial service package where other businesses would have access to a similar thing, but more commensurate with running a business. And we can make that available to you fairly quickly. We'll, if we could just follow up maybe after the meeting or whatever, and find out who's providing that to us as a contact, that would be helpful.
That would be good. What about home services?
Yeah, yeah.
So are y'all, again, following up on some questions from our original?
Sure.
Are y'all still looking at having equipment rental be a part of y'all's business plan for the community so that they'd be able to get their equipment to operate this within their home in front of North Texas Fiber?
We typically like to own our own equipment, therefore we can control it a lot better. So that's, I don't know that we're going to be selling you a box. It's going to be our box. So, yeah.
So you're going to be providing?
Yes. And it's already, the box that we use is already Wi-Fi six-enabled, and it's going to be ahead of what's even available right now. So we're good about that. What we will provide in this will be better than anything at any home in Dallas. You guys will have more here than you've got, than you could even get in Dallas. We've got some commercial customers that may have access to this network, but we don't have residential customers who have anything like this, and none of the providers up there can touch what we're bringing here. So you're going to have a much better network than anyone in the state. There won't be anything like it.
So, another question around Section Eight and the non-voting provision, fourth two. It discusses a charge of ninety dollars a month for cameras. As I refer back to my notes from our original meeting, I know there was a discussion that you brought up, or providing camera coverage and things like that to some community areas, public areas within the city. And I was a little concerned when I saw that change from services y'all provided to a charge that we were making, or something we're being charged for. What can we talk about with regard to that, because that was a little unexpected?
I don't know that we're going to spend the money on a, we're not requiring anything of you. We're spending our money. We're not requiring you to even be a customer. If you are a customer and you want to be a customer, if you want cameras in the community, we want to build them. We're happy to. And/or, conversely, you can get another builder to come out there and build that. If you want us to do it, we're happy to do it, but there's got to be some kind of a charge for it. On a guaranteed eighty-five percent uptake, which we are no longer, that's off the table, we were talking about several things you were going to help us with, but in this case, if that's not on the, or that we were going to help you with. But if that's, if we're no longer doing that, then there are several things I think the city needs and should want, and I think some cameras at the ingress and egress of the city so that you know every car every day that came through here. And, you know, that database will tell you everybody who's local, and so you can narrow it down to police fire, those guys can narrow it down to whatever other cars came in that day. Yeah, I think you need that, and if you want us to help, we'd love to. I think you need gunshot detectors here and there, so everywhere you put a camera, you throw one of those up. So there are a lot of things that you can do that proactively tell police where something's going on that they know about before anybody gets a call. So I mean, there are a lot of things like that that we're way ahead on. You don't have a network here that would allow you to even do that, but with this new fiber network, you're going to be able to do a lot of things.
All right. Now, I want to be clear. I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't be interested in...
Of course.
...in terms of this discussion today. From the original meeting, it was a discussion you brought up as a service y'all wanted to provide, and now it's in our contract that we have to have.
Well, I think if you tear that contract up and start over, we're going to pay the five percent. We're going to do all those things. As far as any kind of guarantee from the city, we don't need it. Not only that, I think the citizens have been so nice to say, "Hurry up. We really need you." So we're not in fear of spending money here, and we're not in fear of finishing what we started. I live here. I'm local. You know, a lot of us are going to be here. You know, we're not hiding. We're right here, and we want to make this the best network it can be. I'm going to retire pretty soon, so I want to have some good internet when I do it. So...
Well, I respect you first, and I'm happy to say that we, I'm happy that we did. I'm happy that we're still talking. I will share with you, my enthusiasm for wanting on here hasn't changed one bit. I actually have a device, probably a board. It's a team detector in my house, provided by State Farm, due to the number of power outages and internet outages. And the company team has now contacted me personally to ask, "What is wrong with your internet?" Because it goes down at the same time every day, several times a day, like clockwork. It is like someone sets an alarm to turn it off. So, yeah, we know we need help. We know what we want to change. We just want to make sure that we make the change that everyone in the city can look within and be happy with.
Will you also be an ISP provider, or will we need you?
We are, we would like to be, yes. And we certainly are for the community, but we would love to have you as a customer, so indeed.
I just want to clarify, you mentioned some of the lines Dallas has, Malakoff, I think. Is that fiber in the ground already?
Yes. Oh, yeah. It's already in the ground.
Who's using it in the local area right now? Who's helping on this yet?
Nobody.
So who would be first?
It depends.
On?
Whether we have you as a customer... Whether we have you as a customer or not.
We're very popular.
Well, if the city's a customer, we've got fiber in the street. We would wanna start here, that's for sure.
Do you have other questions?
Can I move over to the side and contact the program manager?
That's what I'm just suggesting, is that the city manager, you know, get together with the request contract, because they talked about, and so, and then, but if we can, often, if there's a charter, we're reading, I don't know if we're reading up, so it may not be possible, but December reading.
Then we can get it, we can get it done, and I think a lot of us just moving things around. I think probably at the latest would be Tuesday or Wednesday or next week, that we have to provide to the council.
Certainly.
But it gives us about a week, five, fourteen days, and we'll get that done. I think a lot of this, the big hurdle, I think, from the council's perspective, was the franchise fees. We do have some provisions in our charter, the twenty years, that's the longest we can franchise for the company. Those things are really outside of our control.
Sure.
And I think we can work through what we already have. We have a couple of examples to look at as the groundwork to start.
Right.
Move this stuff around, and then happy to get it to our city attorney to review it beforehand. But we can get it.
Yeah, okay.
It's free time, and we'll probably get that.
We're all reasonable, and we'd love to get that done. On another note, Mr. Mayor, if you could find us someone else to negotiate with, he's, he's murder.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
I have one big discussion regarding animal control. Couple of things I wanna start with with this. One, where we're at, I'll need to go backwards and rehash what was already taken place, in my opinion. Number two is that with city manager's permission, I'd like Ms. Jeff to join us at the table, because she's closer to the animals than anybody else, and I'd like to get her involved as well. I think at this stage, where we're at today, we have to understand what we need to do, how we get there. There's a lot of things that we need to understand, but right now, we have a need to make sure the animals are taken care of. One of the speakers has spoke, I don't disagree with any of you at all. I think that with one exception, which is I think that, you know, the city will be capable of running much better shelters than what we've had in the, in the past. And of course, that has always been my attempt. When this started coming about, we were, we'll do what we need to do. I feel like the city took it forward to make sure that the animals are treated well, and the city is treated well. I will clarify to one person, we have an ordinance in place that we put in place about five years ago, because the Humane Society, Chief Blake, complained to me about having to do a special use permit for every time they're giving an adoption in. The only way we could really work that out was to change the ordinance to where any Humane Society that is contracted with the city would not have to fill out even a special use permit, not have to apply for one. And they used to be in our partner, and, you know, they were no longer contracted to us. So by ordinance, they were not about what they wanted to do. With that being said, city manager?
Well, I, now that we no longer have an active contract with the Humane Society this year, Chief Blake, there are a lot of legal provisions that are required of us. The health and safety code is the governing authority on animal shelters, both youth animals, how to manage animals. So moving forward as a shelter now, we're gonna have to comply with a lot of state departments. And not that we have to update one and have to place, previously, we use the kennels we have, I think, very advantageously, to where we looked to home animals, we looked to finding owners, and we kept them there as a holding facility. Now we no longer have places to take them, so they're gonna be more by definition a kennel or shelter. So those are things that I'll, discussions I'll have with the chief of police as far as getting things in order. I think a lot of it falls on me as the city manager, as far as we have to have an advisory board, we have to have a veterinarian that works with us. We have to make sure that the kennel and bush we keep the animals meets the health and safety code requirements. We need most of that anyways. It's probably not, obviously, what we have is not brand new, but really, it's humane treatment of animals. And anyone that goes over there receives the work to care of us, the animals are being treated very humanely. They're engaging with people every day. She's over there multiple times a day, making sure they're fed and watered. She lets them out where they run around, and have larger enclosure every day. So they're not being mistreated. I would say that they're being treated as well or better than they are, because we're not humanizing anything that comes into our shelter. Carol's doing a great job of getting that in place. So, but now that we move forward, as of November first, which is yesterday, we no longer have a contract. So that responsibility falls on us as the city. And we just have to make sure that, as a municipality, that we are in compliance with the state law as far as the shelter and the requirements of that. We will have some time. I think there is some grace period allowed for that. We didn't move forward with a lot of those things because we did not know the direction, see who's going. So I do have all the information. I have done extensive research. I've spent countless hours on this project, trying to find a reasonable solution. Unfortunately, the solution that we're stuck with now is us managing. And I think we're capable, from a knowledge perspective, it's just where we will be challenged, is from a resource perspective, whether the personnel or financially. It's gonna take concerted effort. And without having Carol on board, I would not be near as encouraged, because she's doing a great job. So having that advocate in our city working for us already, I think it's a, it's a huge plus. But we just have, there's a, there's a huge mountain climb.
I think the, it's no, not lost on anyone, the big mountain is, is where we need to do this with. But I'm encouraged, because I have heard from various big box stores in city that are willing to step up and help, even big box stores that are not in the city, or maybe that have helped us. You know, we wanna be with you, since you know what you want to do, see what we can do to help you. So I think we're gonna be, city's gonna be helped. I think the beginning of that is, is once we find, we'll start now that we know where we're at. I think we start looking for grants. We have the time and knowledge. We have to look for grants. And outside, there's a lot of, some of us have been talking to people about, we, city manager's out, to start looking for more grants. We can put there. And then I think Ms. Jeff is probably talking to people from up. You've told me in the past that she talks to folks, so we're sharing that.
It's just, you know, networking and how to build a community is gonna be more involved. It's really gonna be more involved. Actually, it's a new one. Now that they know that we're looking forward, moving forward to providing animal service and people service. And there's lots of stores that have step up to me, that are, you know, forward and stuff. Some of the local, you know, facilities have come forward.
You probably don't, there's a lot of stuff there.
No.
Is that a good, you were two? Just to make some, where we are now, we have thirty thousand dollars of budget for the animal shelter that's unused. That's relatively valuable. I think that we should also look very quickly at establishing an advisory that will have the kind of people involved that she's talking about. I am not only experts in the animal business, but inside the business that is gonna take around this construction, food, all of these kinds of things. So I think we need to give a set of priorities and advisory committees. I'd like to go further. The one council member on this has had the most experience in the separate, Mr. Yaw, of five years. I hope he'll be involved in that and possibly chair it. I think that's a good idea to do. And I, this is where I think we need to start. And Alton Lake, we need a budget. City manager, you should come back to the full council with a minimum budget, probably, to see what we're really going to need. I think that's kind of where we are.
And I agree with the advisory board, that the makeup of the advisory board is dictated by health and safety code, as far as who has to be on.
Yeah, there's, there's management, but it's, I don't think that's, that I, I don't believe it's limited.
Yeah, I think that's one of the priorities as far as moving forward. And I, I'm encouraged. I, I've heard nothing for the last couple of years about the lack of involvement from the community. We've reached out in a two or three week period. Mr. Yaw's has had some rather constructive conversations with the United Way. You know, we've been told all along that there's no resources. You've got to spend more money, because no one will help us. And we've found people in a very short period of time that are overwhelmingly willing to help us. So that's encouraging. You know, if we can get these partnerships in our community to help us, because it's gonna take the village. It really is. If we're gonna humanely take care of these animals that are, as a result of irresponsible head ownership, people who, you know, a puppy's a fifteen year commitment. It's not just something cute that you put under the wrist, which it is. And a lot of people just don't take that responsibility seriously. And then you can tell them, municipalities and counties. I had a conversation this morning with city managers throughout Anderson County. Wade McKinney, our judge, county judge, and they have the same issues with the Humane Society. Couldn't get answers to their questions regarding money and numbers. But I think their big concern is they don't have the resources either. So I think what's happening is the Humane Society is really trying to flip over to be a spay and neuter clinic, period. That's what they're gonna do, is spay and neuter these animals. They're going to get out of the intake and the rescue of them. They just wanna neuter and spay as many as they can in the community. So...
The problem with that, though, is the county department doesn't have a shelter.
Yeah, so they, the majority of their funding goes into the shelter in Athens. The city of Athens owns the property that rescue center sits on. So they're a major player with the animal land, so they have a little bit of leverage than we have, obviously. But I will tell you that all the county officials, the city officials, including us, have all suffered and dealt with the same issues. It's been very difficult to get any answers. And so I think it's encouraging. You know, I went to Tractor Supply, for example, the other day, and looked at vaccines. A ten pound vaccine, which is the highest level of vaccines, seventeen dollars. We're told it's a hundred fifty dollars for a day and a half. My father was a veterinarian. I called him asking, what do you pay for a ten pound vaccine? From a veterinarian, it's about eight bucks. Okay, so if we can get those same type of contacts, and we can get the same type of help and resources, it's not gonna be easy. You know, and that's the conversation you all have. But I think people...
Well, I think, I'm sorry.
I don't know. I just, uh...
I think that we, I think Mr. Foster, I think the advisory committee's well advised. But right, I think that the city can start this by, first off, just isn't with any project, determine, first, why not just determine what our media needs. So then we worry about our future needs. But right now, we need to address all of our needs. And I know that Ms. Jeff and the police chief and the city manager are working closely for that. So, and I do think that we, I don't think that we need to bring up a budget, you know, because we got thirty thousand. I'm not sure about that. Thirty thousand's labels of budget.
Animal control services.
So we're also gonna be connecting to that, too.
This capital.
Okay. So will we make that, that change the next week?
It doesn't have to be immediate. It's all in the same budget.
Okay.
We just need to...
It's not gonna get in our way of the work. So we just do what we need to do.
It's not like it's in the police department. We need to do the animal control, that's still in the other's budget. I'll just need to...
We just need to do our six month adjustment.
Yeah, as long as everyone's aware, it's gonna be coming out of the capital and all this. Depending on what it is. If it's a major project, it'll...
Well, I think it's not, we're not in a hurry. It's better to look and see, when we get a better picture of the bay, then we can come back and discuss. Well, I think we're in a bit hurry to fix the current facility. But, yeah. That's what we're talking about.
Yes.
That would be my suggestion, is to, to take a look at the provisions and the requirements of health and safety code, and ensure that our facility needs help. And whatever that takes, I'm sure we can take care of all of that with money in support. If we get that going, that's when we can sit down, make those immediate construction needs, whatever we have to do in that facility.
Mr. Yaw, are you agreeable to heading out of the advisory committee?
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any issues with that?
Okay.
Okay. But I would say that the problem with the first thing is advisory committee really needs to deal with. I think the city manager, police chief, Ms. Jeff, need to deal with the immediate need. And I think the advisory committee needs to be looking at the future need. And staying in communication with each other, so we know that if we got one thing covered for the other, we're okay. And then what I would like, of course, to just start with, what is the need? How many animals do we need? You know, what are your requests? Once you finish with the needs, then you go to the wants. Because there's some of these things that you come home, and you want to have surgery, and that's want, that's not need. But it's very important, because it's...
Right.
There's, there's chances that nature...
I know there's probably, with the new dog park that's came in, the support that Carol's receiving from some of those patrons that use the dog park. I'm sure a blue one's down there, volunteer.
Oh, they are, yeah.
Down there for kennels. So I know that we've been volunteering together and...
I go up there quite often, and they've, they've just been lining up volunteers.
Absolutely.
And good, good people would be, you know, that would kind of deal with dogs. So, yeah, we won't have to charge volunteers.
Absolutely.
So, anything else you want to ask us?
I just got a question. And I don't know if I'm asking this too early, maybe it's an advisory committee question, but can we charge a licensing fee for dogs?
Sure, it has. Just something we've discussed, our council's discussed, a moral allocation. There, we can do that. We require an ordinance to enact that. One of the things that's kept us from doing that in the past is personnel resources to manage another part of that program.
That's one we haven't done in the past. We already have an ordinance ground up for it, because of the difficulty of staffing here at City Hall. We're, we're not even there about, you know, it's probably, we've done that enough to cover it. Someone else is starting to do that. So that's one we haven't, we haven't pushed that ordinance.
That's our microchip program. Well, and...
Over there.
Something that, that they did in Midland, which I thought was a great thing, was when, when you licensed your animal, they, if your animal was, I don't know, you paid upfront for the, to get them fixed. And then when you came out, there's your certificate, the refund. But they paid upfront, so they, they had incentive to get it done.
That's one of the reasons why I brought up, one of the things that I like to see us do is, you know, or, 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 talks about, you know, the service center. But I don't, well, I, one of the things I thought of, I don't wanna scoot down the same road that the previous organization that we did business with did. If we're doing the exact same thing they did, we should expect the exact same results. We don't want those results. We want better accountability. We wanna encourage the community to do a better job with, I don't say policing, but with, 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 with their animals. And we wanna provide incentives for people who are doing a good job to continue. So, again, I need versus a walk that we can have.
Well, that's gonna be required, I believe, for the service. So it's not whether we won't be removed, it's how we do it.
Right, right. It's, it's how.
It's a how, not a why. That's right.
Right, yeah. So, we do that. Ms. Jeff, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, no.
Anybody else?
Is that a question? I saw your text about six dollars recently. Can you just quickly tell us what happened?
A lot of people's dog park got together and had their heels in and made sure we've done a place, safe place for those dogs to go.
Where do you, where do you?
Where were these dogs? Littering in our kennels?
Oh, were they on litter? Was it on litter?
There was one, they were litter mates. It was a two gallon male litter. I asked to shut across. So we had... So, we had, had a full load of German Shepherd, which the police department looked at, asked to get him trained and then donated back to the department. And then there was a lab and a.
Thank you for the work you put into that and all the effort that you've stepped up. Appreciate all the effort, continue that.
Thank you, it was definitely a heat burner.
Do you have heat burners at that?
I do have heat burners, um, just for, just for, yeah.
Anything else?
Well, I just want the animals taken care of, I don't care if you build a shelter. And I'm really not aware of that money, I don't care what people say, I just want taken care of.
I do too. It'll be nice, it'll be a nice change. Out of one seat, discussion regarding acreage of mobile homes, Mr. City Manager.
We've discussed in our last workshop, showed you pictures of a mobile home that was placed, the model is a home that was in, not much better condition than the one we just tore down. And so, our current ordinance just says that the mobile home that is placed shall be HUD certified. HUD housing or development, there's a standard, any manufactured home after the nineteen seventy four, nineteen seventy eight, meets the criteria. So, we've thrown around, and I know that Shannon and I discussed laying setting an age requirement, a maximum age for a mobile home into our community. I'm sure that when Willow Wood was built, and Tammerack was built, and some of these communities, when they're all brand new, they look really nice, and they look beautiful. But a mobile home's not aged like they built home, it just doesn't, so. Bringing things into our community that are twenty, twenty-five years old already, and now they're bringing them in to set in place of something you just tore down and is not in much better shape. We'd like, and we, I think, we proposed to talk about setting an age requirement. The purpose of having this on the workshop, as I spoke to our city attorney regarding that. Can we set an age requirement? And he said, absolutely, you can. Uh, just have to come up with what that would be. So, before we write an ordinance, uh, changing our current restrictions and requirements, can you get consensus from what would city council like to see?
What's the recommendation to you guys?
I, I, our recommendations five years ago, you know, if we're trying to build a nicer community, why do we need fifteen and twenty year old mobile homes in our community? But, and we only have some of our zoning that allows for it, not all zoning does. So, people are limited anyways in where they bring them.
Just to extend an hour here, just for a second, just to clarify for the record, this is not having any impact on an existing home that someone is currently living in, we're only talking about coming forward.
Correct, anything that's being placed new in an existing or a uh, piece of property. If you replace a twenty year old mobile home, you gotta replace with something five years newer, or ten years newer, or whatever the city.
Or if they're brand new, what you're saying.
Yeah, anybody, everything that's in the city now currently would not be affected at all.
So, don't have to worry that this ordinance that we're discussing would have any impact on anyone who's just living in their existing home, they have nothing to worry about.
Correct.
I know that there's been a lot of COVID, right, that the sort of the national, like I remember when you require a mobile home. Well, that was, you know, that caused a big, it's been, and now that all changed. All I'm saying is, I, maybe it might pay, while we're talking about this, there's a lot of manufacturing homes being built in Athens, which, there's three companies down there building right now. What are the latest federal codes required on these houses? This might be a more effective way to uh, uh, kind of leave this problem at age. I understand there may be alternatives to ages. And it, it could be a new, new federal uh, laws or requirements that, that these, you come, of these companies are having to meet to build. I don't know, I'm just, obviously, we, we wouldn't want to invite a little wiring ring trailer, but so.
And so, you know, the, yeah, we just, we currently just, the standard is, is a HUD home, it has the HUD sticker.
And that means what, what does that really mean?
That just means, yeah.
Some, some way?
It meant whatever requirements were nineteen seventy four, and I think if the requirements would have been substantially changed, then that would maybe change the HUD.
So, what you say, it means HUD requirements as of uh, two thousand and fifteen, or some, something like that?
I think it'll look to see, uh, I think, the biggest concern I would have is a subjective standard, because what you might think is appealing or acceptable to you may not be for the next pass. So, the age requirement takes away all the subjective, tip, all subjectivity. So, objective standard, manufactured on before five years ago or sooner. Uh, twenty, so if we're twenty twenty-two to twenty seventeen models or newer.
And so, you can't mean certain HUD requirements.
So, I, yeah, I, I can check, I'm sure that information's readily available. The other thing that comes to mind while we're talking about this, we have existing RV parks in our city, and we get new requests from time to time. We could have the same issue there to accept the standard things being brought into those areas. Should we look back while we're doing this? Well, I think those are all required to be temporary. They, they aren't, they aren't, but they're required by RV license. Currently, we only have uh, the Littleridge, that's the one we operate now, the one on Luther Lane isn't a lot of operational. Uh, we do have one, the Chief, but if they're in an RV park, designated RV park, they have to be registered. Currently, anything that's in the park, we changed those ordinance requirements just recently. I think the difference is, an RV is a different designation than a mobile home. Absolutely. Because of the size, maybe it's three hundred and forty-nine square feet or less, it's an RV. All these tiny homes are really RVs, and uh, houses.
But from a safety standpoint, we're dealing with some of the same issues as we are with some of these older mobile homes.
We, we are, and uh, I think the thing that really just piqued our interest was the home that replaced the one we tore down in town was better than the one we tore out. And then they wanted us to just put gravel down and add that to the lean, well, that's not how it works. We, we just add to the lean, the lean's on you always, we're not to increase those loads, bro. It's just creative, but.
Great finance.
Yeah, it is creative, because it never pays back, you'll never regret those costs. So.
Well, I know a lot of RV parks do this anyway. You know, you brought up RVs, I love it, it's not something, a lot of RV parks, when I was RV traveling, so. Five years, seven, eighteen years. But I, can we ask Mr. Wiggins a question? Sure, Mr. Wiggins.
Sir.
Safety issues. I'm assuming you see fewer safety issues within your mobile homes than you do with the others?
Right.
Is it mainly in the electrical system, the water system?
Well, I might have to meet the HUD, which was in seventy-six, actually seventy-six, and remember it was HUD approved uh, out in the urban, urban development. Does that mean everything, electrical plumbing, framing, all of that hasn't been by their standards? Like, there's the ones that uh, Mr. Foster mentioned in Athens, Champions don't only meet the HUD, they also, the townhomes do not meet any HUD manufacturing.
So, when you run across one that doesn't pass inspection, like move it in order, what happens to that?
Yeah, as far as doesn't pass inspection.
When you go out to make, are, do you, do you just check it for the HUD tag?
They bring in the paperwork with the HUD, HUD number.
So, we're not doing a physical inspection on it?
Right, because a lot of these ones, we have trouble, come from two hours away, they bring in the paperwork, they meet everything we require, we give a permit, and we show up like this one, and it's, it's like it does.
Got to have an automatic move, approve it. So, if we're not even, if we're not able, if we're not going out and making those physical inspections, I think, yeah, that is, that is probably something that we can, part of it. What we can suggest for the city manager, Rob, is the ordinance for the new years, I've heard uh, Mr. Foster's, you want to repeat what you said?
Well, I just, I think whatever, I've gone here, I know it's almost seventy-six.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm about that.
I think that's really the problem, sir. Yeah, that's what we have today, so.
But, you know, I think it's worth mentioning, uh, just a lot of the issue that it has to meet that plus whatever it's requiring.
Yeah, and there, as Shannon mentioned, you know, that, that's nineteen seventy-six, that's forty, fifty years ago.
That was probably wrong or mathematically.
Right, yeah.
I'm worried.
Yeah, and there's no change to that, so they, like he says, they bring in their paperwork, and they got HUD's certificate from nineteen seventy-six or. We don't inspect them, we just approve the homes because our ordinance allows for it. And then they get here and say, oh my gosh, sorry, sorry you're part of your neighborhood, but we don't have any mechanism from a legal perspective, which is neither delivery or mobile.
So, it's five years of good time.
I think so. Yeah.
Just, just to note here, apparently HUD is considering changes to twenty twenty-two. So, maybe we should get in the week on that, see what it's proposing and what we think that might be about. Should we maybe take our lead from that, what do you think? Well, I think that we require it in, within five years, I think we'd be okay.
Yeah.
What if we require, we're, we're, I mean, I mean, it's, if we take our lead from what they're proposing, you know, if they're gonna pass, we just get ahead of it, and that way we're in line with what the better requirements are.
Yeah, and that old concept that time marches on.
It does.
Uh, time is not friendly to mobile homes, and we see that throughout our city. So, the newer standard we start with, it's a longer period of time we have before it becomes a liability or a psych issue. And now, there's some beautiful mobile homes in our city that are forty, fifty years old, people are taking care of that.
Right, that's not a question.
Yeah, it's not always against.
Not, not all cases will be.
No, and age is the best criteria for us, I think, from an objective perspective.
We're going to, in five years?
I don't understand the question. Well, the O A has something in the bylaws that says teenage, or something like that, we're going to.
We, we, as a city, have jurisdiction. Our zoning uh, supersedes any requirement that the O A would have with the zoning issue. Any of the deed restriction violations are civil issues between the O A and the property owner. We will enforce our city ordinances.
I don't know what they do, I just wonder. I just wonder in five years, it's on, like, my R D, I just, I know it's an RV, it's a mobile home, it's kind of set at the same. My RV is seven years old, and it's extremely nice. Do you think that's too? I do, personally, I do.
Yeah, I was going to say to the short person. It can be a stretch.
I don't know, what do you think, Mr. Wiggins?
It's better than that one.
Ten, whatever, fifty.
How, how many more come from the ten to five? How old's the one that just came in and we're not happy with?
I think it was in the nineteen nineties.
Right, four, I believe, four, yeah.
And you know, when you think that nineteen ninety's doesn't seem that long ago? Nineteen ninety-two is thirty years ago. It doesn't seem like that long ago, but it is thirty years.
Nineties is like the seventies, now.
The POAs that do that, whether we're active, like Willow Wood, when they're active, theirs is three years old.
There's what?
Three.
There's just three years in, in Willow Wood when it's active. But they're, actually.
And Mr. Vaughn was here from Tammerack, do you get a deed restrictions in Tammerack?
Yes, our, our deed restrictions say that it could be no more than three years of age. And we've actually taken orders to court to have, for, to have the house removed that was brought in, it was early two thousands. And they redone the outside, but it looked beautiful. Went on the inside of it, and it looked like it was that old. So, our deed restrictions, you cannot bring anything in older than three years.
And I think maybe that should, that should have some influence, if the subdivisions in our community that normally attract mobile homes, if they're saying three years, they don't want anything in their subdivision older than three years old, that's kind of the obvious association.
That's voted on by the entire association.
Correct.
Can we say five years and someone can apply for a variance? Because I understand Mickey's point, but we, we uh, someone called and asked about putting up, when I was still in the POA, um, they wanted to put in a ten year old mobile home in the, in that area by the airport. And um, I mean, it, it was already there, and I was calling to say, hey, you can't do that. Well, come to find out, they can. But they said, oh, you'll be so pleased once we get it fixed up, I mean, originally it was pink and white. Well, they fixed it up, but it's still not a beauty. Um, and I can't remember now if it was ten or twelve years old. But I'm, I'm in favor of five years with, you know, if somebody has.
Well, hearing from Mr. Vaughn, who focuses on that, that says a lot.
Says a lot.
And I will tell you, from our perspective, as the governing or the administrative staff, anything that may do is create issues for us. So, five years with exceptions, but those are subjective exceptions. It's so much easier and the director idea of all of the administrative staff, all the rules is written, and I will defend you forever. If you want to change the rules, it's go to the governing body and change the rules. So, having objective standards for us is much simpler to enforce. And that's, that's why we take a number, an age number, there, like I say, there's some beautiful homes in the city that are twenty, thirty years old, that's all the same care of, that's perfectly fine.
Right.
Yeah, there's some that are a lot newer than that, that's all in the park.
Well, we know there's exceptions, just about every rule.
There is, yes.
So, whether it's this or something else.
Even if you put five years, somebody could still be within the range if they wanted to, with a variance.
So, if we put five, the POA says three, five prevail, so if they take.
No, no, no.
Their deed restrictions can be greater than ours, they can be less.
Well, what I want, wanted to interject is, our deed restrictions by our lawyers, would be with a lawyer. Since it, that the deed restrictions don't specifically state that the board can give a variance, we cannot give a variance for any, if you, if y'all say a five year, they try to bring a five year in, that means we're going to take it to court.
So, you would enforce your three years.
We, 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 we have to, we don't have a choice.
Right.
The way our deed restrictions are written, our board cannot give a variance.
So, so there's no reason why, if we want to go with five years, and let's say Tammerack has three, they still have the legal rights and enforce their deed restriction, we don't have any ability to, to diminish their requirements, and they can be more restricted as they are.
And we, we would have worked with this, we would have seen that.
Right, right. I think, can answer your question about variances, I'm, I'm not positive on this, I'm a city manager. But if somebody want to take it to the O A, uh, would that be something that possibly be done?
Yes, but it would not override.
No, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just saying, if somebody wants to go in, the O A doesn't have a, the three year, we have five, they've got a, a truck that's six years old, but they bought it brand new two years ago. You know, that might be something.
Yeah, they, they would need such respect.
They could say a urge for that, and I think the judicial justice would hear that and decide whether they can or not.
That, that would be the exception, I think.
They cannot do it based on uh, revenue issue, but, cost.
Has to provide a hardship.
Right, they have to provide a hardship, and I think that, you know, something like what I just mentioned would be a hardship. You know, I, I know it's, I know it's six years old, but it's brand new about three years ago.
We need to stretch that, like, there'd be a five year old mobile home sitting somewhere that had never been purchased. And then these are like spotted, so.
Yeah, and that may be something that someone would consider, like, it's a brand new home, but.
So, we have an hour for making. So, that sort of adjustments would be uh, available to make those assumptions. It also protects us from the curtain in the middle of the night, kind of, directly.
Okay, so we're.
Back to five, because that's.
Go ahead, once.
But we're not, it's disgusting.
Is anyone, uh, does any council member object to the fee, city manager, repair it for five years?
No, it's really five, and then it comes to vote if you.
You just need an artist.
You're gonna go down, so I will work on that, that gives us a start at one least.
Thank you all very much. I'd like to thank the audience for your support for President today, and please, we all take this very seriously, and we all have the best interest of our animals and our, most of us here around the world. I'd like to thank the audience for your support, President, please, we all take this very seriously, and we all have the best interest of our animals in part, most of us here are animal owners, and, uh, we love it. Want you to do it here?
Why don't you do it, Eric?